I call to order the meeting of the mayor and council of the borough of River Edge, special meeting. February fifth, two thousand and twenty four, at the River Edge Library and also on Zoom. I ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence as we reflect upon all those that we care about, love, and we um. For a moment. I ask everyone to turn to the flag, ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in immeasurable liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a statement of compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting implies with the Open Public Meeting Act by notification via the January eleventh, two thousand and twenty four. Sunshine notice containing the time, date, and location and access information. To the town news and the record and by posting of the same on the municipal bulletin board. And the borough website and following notice of the same with the municipal clerk, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Here.
Council President Monica Sanoppon, here.
Councilwoman Consola, here.
Councilwoman Mala Lari, here.
Councilman Benson, here.
Councilman Glass, here.
Mayor Papaleo, here.
Here, Madam Clerk, would you also just call the role of our professionals who are with us, our three attorneys?
Four.
Our attorney John Shidini.
President.
Our attorney Sarah.
Are you ready?
My name is.
Here.
Okay, so um we have only one item on for tonight, we are not making any decisions, the governing body is taking no action tonight. The discussion today is a cannabis overlay zone. So to set the uh to set the stage for this, if I may. What happened is several years ago, and Mr. Logana and others will answer in more detail, but several years ago. Uh, the state of New Jersey had a constitutional amendment to allow cannabis to be sold in the state of New Jersey. And it was, I believe, on the ballot during November, correct? And during that time, a good portion of River Edge, Michelle, I think, almost sixty.
Fifty-six percent, so two to one, basically.
voted for this, um, the law then moved to regulation and other elements of where the state legislator. Legislation needed to take action. And one of the things that was written into the law, and this will be discussed in a more finite way. Was that if a town did not make it illegal, it would become legal, so we needed to take action. There are about five hundred and sixty-five municipalities in the state of New Jersey, seventy in Burton County. And we were all waiting to see what the regulations were going to be, and the regulations were not forthcoming. And so River Edge, like pretty much most of the five hundred and sixty-five municipalities in the state of New Jersey. Made all cannabis sales within our municipality illegal. That is our current state. We have made cannabis, all five licenses, I believe, um, illegal. So um, we have been approached by several companies who are interested in bringing cannabis retail to River Edge. Uh, we have spoken to councils and they have told us that it's our responsibility to have a public hearing to see if the town wants this. And that's one of the two questions, does the town want us to consider this opportunity for revenue? Um, source as a revenue source, we would, and again, I'm not a lawyer, we'll have our lawyers and our experts speak to this. Um, it's up to two percent that we can receive in revenue from their sales. And um. And if so, where would we consider it? Where would we approve for it to be? And so it'd be an overlay, so it would be restricted. And if uh, if this was something that we would move forward at the, say this was something the town wanted. Uh, we're going to try to determine that at this open public hearing. Then what would occur next? Well, if we saw that there was a positive uh movement for it, then we would have an. Change to make it legal for a license. And that ordinance would go to the next council, official council, regular council meeting. And then that would be the first hearing. Uh, and then it would go to a second hearing. And if after those two obstacles, we decided as a town and as a council, that this was something we want, we would then make it legal. And then those companies would have an opportunity to apply, and we'll talk about that to the town. And we would see whether we wanted to grant them a license in our town. We would be restricting it. For zone. And that overlay is something we're going to talk about at greater extent. But essentially, what we're talking about is a portion of River Edge that is on the other side of Route four. And is surrounded on the three wide sides by Hackensack.
And.
And Paramus. So um, so I want to emphasize, nothing is being decided tonight, we are taking no official action. We have two questions before us, does the town think that this is a good idea? And if the town doesn't, well then it dies here. Because we've already made it illegal. Okay, but if the town is interested in us moving forward, then it would um. The second question is the town, is, are you the residents and the residents on um with, who are remotely with us? Are you comfortable with this area being the only area? That uh such a business could, if they chose to, uh petition us to open cannabis retailing? Okay, so um, so that's a very, very general explanation of why we're here tonight. We needed to designate a subcommittee for this, uh, Councilwoman Kaufman, uh, who used to be our council president. Is the chair of that, and I'm going to ask her to take over at this point.
And the other members of the committee are Councilman Benson and Councilwoman Mala Lari. Um, good to see everyone tonight. As the mayor said, we're here holding this meeting because we want your feedback in order to take an action like this. Um, when it became legal in two thousand and twenty-one, we opted out. We have now seen many facilities open without incidents, and we will be discussing tonight whether we think. It, what we think is a reasonable approach to protect River Edge while also taking advantage of the financial benefits. We're lucky to have some locations near Route four that might make sense, and Mr. Logana will be discussing this. So as the mayor said, we're looking at one cannabis retailer in one specific zone in town. We obviously want to do whatever we can to help our town. And since we do not have a large commercial or industrial tax base. The opportunity to collect a two percent tax on retail recreational cannabis sales would be a big plus for us. App dot com wrote an article on July twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three, showing ten towns across New Jersey. Which averaged four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in cannabis tax revenue for those towns in two thousand and twenty-two. Retail cannabis could help offset future tax increases. It's too early to say what this impact would be to everyone's tax bill, given that we're just at the beginning of this process, but it would no doubt help us. We're very fortunate to have Mr. Logana here tonight, he's a foremost expert in this area. He has helped municipalities write cannabis ordinances in Fort Lee, Barfield, Paramus, Hackensack, South Hackensack. As well as representing private clients seeking land use approval for cannabis operations. So I'm now turning it over to him.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, it's good to be here this evening, President of River Edge, thank you for coming out this evening, um, your input is, will be valuable, I assure you. My job here is to kind of give you an overview from, from what can be expected from soup to nuts, from beginning to end. Um, as Councilwoman Kaufman stated, my name is Daniel Logana. I work for the firm of Cleary Giacobi Alfieri and Jacobs, and we serve as redevelopment council for the Borough of River Edge. I was approached by Ms. Kaufman to come up with some ideas of. What would this look like and where would it go? And then what would be the parameters by which the Borough of River Edge would attempt to control this? So as the mayor indicated in two thousand and twenty, uh, this was put to a referendum. And the borough unanimously voted for it, uh, sixty-six percent to thirty-three percent. That's a different scenario because that's with statewide, it was a statewide question. Now the question becomes is, do we want it and how do we want it, what's going to look like when it comes to our town? Since uh, two thousand and twenty-two, April first, two thousand and twenty-two, is when. The retail establishments were first granted licensing, twelve facilities opened up on day one. I think there's seventy-five total facilities now that are open statewide. So. When, when you start to look at this, um, from a regulatory perspective, from the local level. Um, the state statute has pretty much give, given the local municipality full authority to regulate this, like any other business. Probably even more so, it's quite possibly the most regulated industry currently in this state. As, as like the medical industry, it's very highly regulated and it comes all from the state guidelines, and then you have this kind of super authority. From the land use perspectives, at the, when it gets to the local municipalities. What kind of licenses are there available? There's six different types of licenses, number one is a cultivation license. Uh, that's where they actually physically grow the cannabis. And that's not what's being proposed here, you have a manufacturing process where they take the leftover stocks and they convert it into oils or. Um, different types of byproducts that make edibles, uh, that are often, you know, infused into candies and. And are sold in retail shops, that's not being proposed here. Wholesalers are exactly what it sounds like a wholesaler, that's not being proposed here. What's being proposed here is a retail establishment, one retail establishment. Which means that there'll be only one available license for that, for a retail establishment in the borough. There was a mention about taxes, taxes are kind of the driving force behind this, it's a revenue taker, it's an emerging industry. And you can see that the towns that have gotten in early on are starting to reap the benefits ahead of the towns that have not. Um, and there's kind of a going to be a pinnacle point as more and more businesses come online, um, and the towns that get in. Now are going to reap those benefits for a few years until there is that cooling effect that is anticipated. And nobody knows what that's going to look like, but as Councilwoman Kaufman, Kaufman said, um. That is significant throughout various boroughs, I mean, if you have an eighty million dollar budget, uh, four hundred thousand dollars might not be too much, but if you have a twenty million dollar budget, four hundred thousand dollars could be quite significant. Some of the parameters when it comes to the collection of taxes, the CFO will have the ability to audit the books. They have to have sale receipts on everything, everything is barcoded. Uh, retail establishments, everything is prepackaged. There are, everything is scanned ahead of time, everything is weighed ahead of time, everything is barcoded and everything is scanned into computer systems. They have to do that for state regulations, again, highly regulated industry. So. Their receipt, sale receipts will match all of those barcodes, there's no uh ability, I mean, I shouldn't say that, but. It's very, very highly unlikely that there will be anything that's not weighed appropriately, sold and barcoded. As, as very strict compliance is required. If there are any irregularities, the CFO will have the ability to audit their books and determine whether or not there's been any shortfall in tax payments, that happens at the end of the year. And uh, two thousand and twenty-two, the uh revenue ranges uh ranged from a hundred fifty thousand dollars. To over a million dollars in one town, you know, Belmar down in Camden County. Uh, so there's been a, a huge variety of, of income influx into these towns. Um, one of the townships of Lawrenceville Township down in Mercer County. Um, the business administrator was able, uh, indicated to the newspaper, they were able to pay for their entire. Uh, municipal garbage collection for an entire year with that revenue. So it, it can be very helpful, um, uh, in terms of setting off municipal budget increases or paying off existing costs. So again, the licensing requirement will then also be a separate section of the ordinance, which will require certain licensing uh parameters for these applicants. They'll only be allowed a retail license, anybody else who tries to come in for another license, it's still a prohibited use. So it's only one class, class five, it's how it's, uh, it's dubbed. If there's an attempt for a second license, that person will be outright rejected, as one license is already occupied. There will be no further discussion with any other applicants, once that license is obtained, unless that license is revoked by the governing body for some improper activity. That license is occupied, there will be no other retail establishments in the borough. Now, in the ordinance, it will say, all other uses are strictly prohibited. So it is going to be as defined as possibly can be, one class five retail establishment. And that will be established, uh, limitation on licenses, which is really what the state statute. Requires or, or permits the governing body to do, and my recommendation is to set a number, some municipalities will open it up. Multiple licenses, let the property and the market dictate how many, uh, ultimately, you're not going to have one on every corner. There's just going to be too much competition and the market will regulate. The governing body and the subcommittee has approached me to say, no, it's, what we want is one license and that's it. So it's going to be strictly prohibited. In addition to that licensing, uh, to the tax revenue, there's going to be a licensing fee. Those annual, our annual licensing fees that range anywhere between seven thousand dollars a year to about thirty thousand dollars a year. That will be something that the governing body has to determine, and that will be renewable every year, non-refundable that the applicant will have to pay in addition to the two percent tax base. There's also an enforcement mechanism uh from the governing body, so if the governing body, uh, there's a zoning violation or, or violation that, for instance, if there's. Any violation of the code itself, the governing body can act by conducting a public hearing with the applicant and determine whether or not. A suspension or revocation of their license is appropriate, depending on the conduct and the activity that's, that will be occurring. So there is oversight from the governing body's perspective, uh, on the, on the uh business itself. Much like any other business that we have, if it's a restaurant or a liquor store is doing something inappropriate, they're subject to oversight, rescission and revocation. Anybody who gets their license revoked will not be permitted to reapply in this borough. So those are kind of some of the oversights from the licensing perspective. One of the elements of the licensing is something called a resolution of local support. So if the governing body implements the zoning criteria and permits this uh use, then. The, the governing body will receive applications from various applicants and they will have those applicants at public meetings. And their regular mayor and council meetings, and they will, they will have a presentation. Um, and essentially, uh, you know, the governing body hasn't gotten into the specifics of how they will. Rate those applicants, they can be a scoring system, uh, they cannot be a scoring system, it can be kind of how, how that person presents their individual applications. And, and they're going to look for things like site control, do they have a property, do they have a lease agreement? Uh, do they have other businesses in the state they are currently operating? And the governing body can then select from the various applicants that they'll receive on who they want to pick. And again, that will be at a public meeting, so that's, that's kind of the first step in the process, once the governing body grants a resolution of local support. Then the applicant can take that resolution and go to the state and complete the rigorous background check that the state does. Uh, so this is all kind of working in concert with the state regulations. Let's talk about some of the zoning, as the mayor indicated, um, speaking with the subcommittee, the. This is called an overlay zone, and as you can see from, from the map. The overlay zone has been essentially defined as Route four east to the River Edge border. And you can see, uh, on the top of that page is north. And that's, that, that large building is your Total Wine and the complex. And as you go north, uh, you have Intercomac Road and the rest of the borough, on the top key, it's kind of a small. Key, but you can see that this is at the very, very far southern end of the, of the borough, right by the off ramp for Main Street to Hackensack. This will be the only area where the retail will be permitted. Any other area where an applicant will seek to go will require a use variance before the zoning board. Which is essentially the highest burden of proof. And it's a non-permitted use in a non-permitted zone. Where a governing body who just recently adopted an ordinance setting for an overlay zone. That applicant has the largest hurdle a land use applicant can have. So it's, I want to say it's impossible, you have to come up with the perfect spot somewhere else in the borough. And it will look negatively because the governing body just exerts due diligence determining where it wants it. So this, for all intents and purposes, will be the zone that it is actually permitted, everywhere else it will be prohibited. It will be permitted as what is known as a conditional use, which means that the applicant has to meet certain. Conditions before it is actually considered a permitted use. Most of the conditional uses that you'll find in your current ordinance are something like a church or synagogue. Where they're typically in residential neighborhoods, so the governing body establishes them as conditional uses. To establish parameters, for instance, parking is always the number one uh concern when you have uses like this. Setback requirements, height requirements, all of those can be done as the standards. For the use before they even are established as a permitted use, they have to meet all of these conditions or seek variance really for the zoning board or planning board. One of the um, conditions of the, of the uh ordinance will be that they have to go for site plan review before the planning board. So there'll be oversight from the governing body to determine the applicant who, which, which uh business they would like to see move forward in the town. And then once the applicant has gathered all of their uh criteria, all of their, all of their documents, they will have to present a land use application. Before the planning board, and the planning board will have another layer of oversight. And that's where it kind of nitty gritty gets involved, like any other application, the planning board will look at things like security, parking, circulation, deliveries. Uh, hours of operation, lighting, uh, refuse, all of that will be looked at. Closely, and they'll have questions and modifications will be made at that time to make sure that the site operates appropriately. So as, as Miss Kaufman stated, I've had experience representing uh private applicants in other towns, and. I'll tell you, um, any applicant who is serious about this will first have a security plan in place. That is a security plan that has been vetted by the local municipality's chief of police. I have, I had all of my applicants submit a security plan, and that includes things like armed personnel onsite. Uh, high uh resolution LED cameras at all four corners of the building. Security cameras on the interior of the building. Uh, ID checks at the door, not just a visual, but a scan of any of the ID. And um, a, and then the state requires uh the retail area to have a vault. And that vault is inspected prior to opening, which is not just your standard uh two-by-four plywood, it requires essentially. An entire room to be built out as a safe. Everything will be key fobbed, and the individuals who will uh have access to that back area will have undergone criminal background checks through the state. There is no product sold on the interior layout. And the interior layout is typical of that of an Apple Store, if anybody ever been to an Apple Store, you walk in and it's um. A kind of vanilla type of building, uh, very, um, a lot of white marble, and there's iPads. Where customers will come in, if they have not already pre-ordered online. They can search any products via the iPad. They then will enter their information, this is after their ID, so to ensure that they're twenty-one years or older. And that's also by state law, obviously, that cannot be, uh, nobody can go in who's under the age of twenty-one. After they've searched for their product, they then will approach the counter, their IDs will be scanned again. And then the product will be brought out from the vault to the customer to, to complete the sales transaction. And the customer will be able to leave at that point. The only product that is uh sold in the interior is the paraphernalia, things like papers or pipes or stuff like that, that is sold on the interior. No cannabis will be displayed on the, on the interior of the facility, that is all under lock and key. So the security plan is very important. Most for retail will have armed personnel. Um, I've really counseled my clients to engage with the local police officers. To see if there are any retired police officers from the community that they could hire, if not, they'll hire uh private security personnel. Parking requirements is another uh big concern when it comes to retail. One of the elements of the interior of the building layout that's very positive is that they have a kind of a cattle call type of uh area. Uh, vestibule area to bring customers in and off the street, so they are not lined up outside. That's something that applicants really don't want, it doesn't look good, um, from a business perspective, it's not something that a planning board will want. They want to make sure that all the business is being conducted on the interior of the building. So you can walk in and they'll have an air vestibule area prior to being uh security checked, the, the ID checked. And then you can actually enter into the retail area. The parking requirement is essential because you don't want cars, especially in this area, cars piled up on the Route four, it's a traffic hazard. And the planning board will be able to review um the parking requirements, and the parking requirements can be set by the governing body. Um, typically, a, a strict requirement is one parking space for every two hundred uh square feet of retail space. Plus another parking space for every employee. So everybody's accounted for essentially. That is a very, very important aspect, and I, and I would um. Counsel the planning board here to look closely at parking and circulation. It's a, it's a really good location because it's on a major highway, but one of the drawbacks is you don't want traffic to spill onto Route four. Now, I think anybody who's familiar with this is familiar with the Ascend in Rochelle Park. Um, that had its own set of circumstances because of its driveway access and its parking location. And uh, that facility dealt with that by putting a full-time police officer at the entranceway for the first few months. While it uh kind of the, the bad kind of quieted down, I always liken it to like a Krispy Kreme, when it opened up, everybody shoots over there. It really backs up, and then it starts to quiet down, and people start to utilize it as they see comfortable. Um, not, not everybody showing up at seven AM in the morning, this is not like a Dunkin' Donuts. Where you're having people in and out all day long, it has its peak hours. So you, you can manage that uh various ways. So it really all depends on the site, the location, and how it's currently set up. One of the elements that I would recommend, and I do this again with my private clients, is. I recommend hours of operation, which can be set by ordinance to be ten AM to ten PM. And what that allows is for um, the morning rush to cool off before anybody wants to go. What, uh, my experience is, and I've done traffic studies for various applicants or prior applicants. And the peak hour here is really that four-thirty to six-thirty. Where people are on their way home and they're stopping on their way home, much like somebody maybe grabbing a bottle of wine on the way home for dinner. And then it, it has a little bit of a peak again after that eight o'clock hour, uh, you know, if it's open until ten o'clock, you might get people who are going back out. After dinner to go, to go purchase it. Um, so one of the ways that the governing body can control this is by setting the hours of operation. Um, some towns do seven to seven, I think you're running into um some of the morning peak issues, so it's beneficial. Maybe start that a little bit later and let it go into the evening. So that's another aspect of control that the governing body has. Deliveries, um. One thing that I hear is funny to, where applicants will say, I wish I had tractor trailers full of cannabis, I don't, it just doesn't. It's not that much, it's vans. So deliveries are a little bit less of a concern. Deliveries are done, again, highly regulated, they're done by GPS monitored vehicles that are all registered with the state. So they know how much is in there, who is driving it, again, driver is um. Background checked by the state of New Jersey, they have to be uh employed by the facility. And they can then deliver the product. And deliveries, which will be done during site plan phase, um, will be done, you know, through a secure door with the armed personnel onsite. One of the other requirements or one of the other measures that the governing body can implement is distance to school requirements, I don't believe this is an issue here. I think we did a radius map. Um, one of the concerns multiple municipalities have is not to be too close to grammar schools and high schools. But this, because this is a kind of a somewhat secluded area and you have a highway that's, that's breaking it up. Uh, I don't believe that that is going to be a concern here, however, the governing body can still implement uh those requirements for the future. Say the city of Hackensack puts in a school or daycare and, and that might trigger some concerns. Um, but again, that's also another avenue there. Uh, one thing that's always talked about is odor mitigation. Uh, there's always a concern that you're going to pull up to this facility and there's going to be this. Bluffing smell of cannabis coming out and it's just going to. Bluffing smell of cannabis coming out and it's just gonna be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Um that is more of an issue when it comes to the cultivation uh aspect of it where you're actually growing the plant. Um it's become less of a concern because most applicants come in with a full odor mitigation plan. They come in with. Microcarbon filters, they have ability now to seal the buildings from the interior. Uh because they have their own due diligence in terms of preventing mold from coming in, anything that gets molded. They can't have, so they really do their due diligence in sealing up the building and preventing any air from any exterior air from getting in. That's not really an issue here because in the retail business, everything is prepackaged. So there is no odor that's going to emanate from this type of use. Refuse collection is one that always comes up as well. The typical refuse that is generated from a retail facility is your office trash. All um refuse that is uh at the site. Uh anything having to do with cannabis has got to be done through a state uh controlled uh hauler. Now that again also is really more for the cultivator who is growing the plant, picking the cannabis and then discarding. The stems and the stalks and all of this of roots and everything. And that gets sold off to manufacturing and that has to be again done in a very controlled manner. That's not what's happening here. What's happening here. Is basically your standard office gar- office garbage, so small refuse containers, that's really not an issue here. And last but not least, question always comes up as signage. What's this gonna look like from the outside? Are there gonna be, you know? Uh all sorts of cannabis paraphernalia hanging off this building or what's it gonna look like? The answer is no, and it's twofold. Number one, the state does not permit it. So if you if if you've seen now. Uh ascend on Route seventeen and rise on Route four in Paramus, you can see their signs are pretty. They try to get clever on how to incorporate some of the cannabis uh into it, but that's about what you're gonna see. A lot of frosted glass, no cannabis uh that's going to be visible from the street. Again, a lot of these buildings. A lot of these uh facilities are vanilla and it's done purposely. Um I've had applicants ask, what kind of. Inside do you want? Do you want the Apple store or do you want more like um you know wood tones, raised and you know? They always say Apple store. Every town says Apple store. We want it like nice and clean like a like a you know new age bank. So the signage from the outside is gonna be very minimal. The governing body can also implement its own sign ordinances so that there's not. Uh oversized signs. Um one thing I would say is from Route four, you might want some signage. To to be able to um attract your your vehicular customer so that they're not getting lost and having to turn around and make U-turns. So you want a decent sign on the site, but nothing that's going to to uh you know scream cannabis and it's not gonna be, you know. Anything uh visible from a paraphernalia perspective from the roadway. So that's pretty much what the site plan will look like. All those kind of concerns that are going to be vetted. Uh by a plan by the planning board, borough's planning board. When they when they an applicant finally gets to that point and there'll be engineering plans, there'll be architectural plans. Um the board engineer will review it, the board planner will review, so you'll have your own professionals. There'll be the board attorney who will also be part of it as well. So there's this this is kind of superstructure of. Uh review over these kinds of applications. At that time too, your chief of police will be able to weigh in. Your um BPW will be able to weigh in, your fire commissioner will be able to weigh in. Your sewer commissioner will be able to weigh in, so there'll there'll be um a lot of oversight at that level. Some of procedure standpoint, um what can be expected next? The mayor touched on this. If the governing body after this meeting decides to move forward with this, they will introduce an ordinance at a public meeting. And that ordinance will be, you'll be able to see the ordinance, what it looks like, and it'll set forth some of the stuff that I just talked about. There'll be a conditional use standard in an overlay and it'll set forth a lot of the parameters that I talked about, things like parking requirements, things like signage requirements, hours of operation. And they'll all be laid out in ordinance. Then it will go to a second reading, which is your uh adoption period. Um I should say that prior to that, it will go to the planning board. For review because you're changing your zoning ordinance and the planning board will have to determine whether this ordinance. Is consistent with the borough's overall master plan. So again, there's another layer of oversight there. And then if the planning board determines that this use is consistent with its master plan goals, then it'll go back to the governing body. To uh adopt it on final passage. At that point, the uh all the residents will be notified of it. All of the residents within two hundred feet of the entire zone will be notified of it. So every resident within a two hundred foot radius of that zone will be notified of that. Most of them, again, are gonna be Hackensack residents. But anybody in that zone by law have to be notified. At that point, the public will have the ability to speak for or against the applicant. Uh against the ordinance passage and the governing body will have to uh hear the public out. Once the ordinance is adopted, there'll be a publication period, uh which is ten days. And then at that point, the governing body uh if everything passes, will then begin to receive applicants for review. At that point, an applicant will formally come into a governing body public hearing and present why they feel they should be the River Edge. Uh person, a river edge company. And and off to the races in terms of. Getting their site plan review done by the planning board, completing their state license requirements, which is really the big hurdle. Um I I've seen a lot of applicants go up to the state and they really dissect your finances to make sure that you have enough capital. Uh to to conduct this business. This is, you know, unfortunately, you need a lot of capital to get into this business. Um and then do you have local control? What does your site look like? Ultimately, there'll be a final inspection. On the site itself, once it's constructed. So again, your zoning official and your code enforcement officer will be able to review everything. And then a state will send a separate uh zoning officer, zoning official who will review things like the vault, your security measures. Your fob keys, make sure all of that is in line and then they have to complete the licensing process. Uh uh application from the local levels, pay their fee and then they can get their license. So. From soup to nuts, if the governing body were to adopt this today, which they're not, as the mayor indicated. Uh you're looking on at least a year to two years before a facility is actually open to servers and that's a best case scenario. It's a rigorous process, uh again, highly regulated industry, um not an easy business to get into. And um you know, your job is to make it difficult. They're not gonna make it easy. I'm not gonna make it easy. We're not gonna make it easy. We're gonna. There's there's gonna be a lot of oversight if this goes through. Um with that, mayor, I really have nothing else to add. Public has any questions?
Uh Councilman Kaufman, anything you would like to add for the committed subcommittee?
Not right now.
Very good. So um we're going to open to the public and we work for you. So we want to know what you think. Um we um. I expect always that the members of the council act in a professional manner and uh and I know they will. But I expect the same thing from the public. So uh everyone will get two minutes. Each person will only get two minutes. Um if there's a back and forth, if a question is asked and uh that eats into the two minutes, you will get additional time. So no one will be cheated out of the two minutes. I've already asked Mr. Shidanian to make sure that he arbitrates that. Uh but I've also said to him, if there is a discussion point, um that would not come out of your two minutes time. Um but before we open to those who are present or those who are remote, we're gonna open to those who are remote also. We're going to first ask our borough clerk to read into the record, uh how many, eight now, ten? Twelve. Twelve individuals, uh all residents. Have already sent in written comments and they may be for, they may be against, but we're gonna start with that. And then if the governing body does not object, what we would do is we would do two present, one remote. Is that acceptable? Alright. So having said that this is it, could I have a motion from uh. Councilman Kaufman and a second from Councilman Benson to open to the public uh for comments. Limited to two minutes, given the parameters I have already stated.
So will.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there any abstention? Hearing non, I now turn to the borough clerk if you could read into the record the name, the address and the comment.
These emails are being read in the order that they were received. The first email was received from Michael DeSantis, seven forty-one Elm Avenue. I would be in favor of this only if the tax revenue and relief would significantly reduce our RE taxes each and every year. Please outline.
Hold on a second. Someone seems to have. Yeah. What I'm gonna ask um is uh I I think there was a phone on, so we and that happens, that's okay. Uh could you start again?
Sure. Uh this email is from Michael DeSantis of seven forty-one Elm Avenue. I would be in favor of this only if the tax revenue relief would significantly reduce our RE taxes each and every year. Please outline how much will pass based on the current tax rate and percentage of the.
The next email is from James Hunt, two sixteen Dorchester Road. I am in favor of a medicinal recreational dispensary for the following. Number one, the location is ideal. No kids have to walk past it to go to school. Traffic slash parking would not impact the residential portion of town. People walking from the bus or the train would not impact the residential portion of town. I would venture that many people do not even know that the proposed location is part of River Edge. Number two, the most prominent storefronts in our town are the CVS and the Total Wine. Sale of legal drugs has been established as an acceptable revenue stream for River Edge. Number three, I would prefer to support a River Edge business than the Maywood business that is currently the closest dispensary. The next email is from Linda May of Manning Avenue. I am in favor of permitting a cannabis retailer in town. Please explore this topic. This would benefit the town in many ways, not only the extra tax revenue, but it would also fill an empty storefront. I believe it would bring businesses to town and therefore people will also shop at the other stores and restaurants here. Benefiting existing businesses as well. Maybe this will even encourage other businesses to open here, filling more empty storefronts. Getting the town more tax revenue. So I vote yes, yes, yes. Thank you for looking for ways to benefit the town. The next email is from Rosemary Murphy of Seventh Avenue. I am totally against this. This is not as benign as once believed. There are people having psychotic episodes after smoking this. Why would the town want to encourage this so close to home? The next email is from Samantha Siaffi, eight thirty-five Bogar Road. I would like to submit the following comment for today's special council meeting regarding the discussion of having a legal dispensary in town. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I am very much in favor of our town taking on new business opportunities. And welcome the tax benefits to our community. My primary concern is with traffic and I hope the town has discussed. Lessons learned and best practices with other municipalities such as Rochelle Park and their current operations on major traffic areas. I also hope our town has the opportunity to consider limitations on signage and marketing such as the use of neon signs or flyers. To avoid overt advertising to young folks. I think the cannabis market is a great opportunity for business owners and consumers alike. Long as it is done responsibly and tastefully. I also think. That the more accessible stores like these become, the traffic burden will lessen as well as stigma the business owners encounter. Thank you for your time. Next email is from Patty Alberg, six fifty-nine Fifth Avenue. I am writing in support of permitting one cannabis retailer in River Edge. I think the location is a good spot for this business. I believe it would help with tax revenue for the town. It would also help to stabilize our property taxes. Legal cannabis is here to stay and it would be beneficial to be able to capitalize on this as a municipality. The next email is from Nick Now, two forty-six Madison Avenue. As a resident of River Edge, I have no issue with allowing cannabis, the cannabis store to be opened on Route four. Especially if it's going to lower our taxes, which I think are extremely high. The next email is from Robert Alberg, six fifty-nine Fifth Avenue. I am in favor of granting approval for the request of permitting one cannabis retailer on the far side of Route four at or near the Liberty Travel location. Since this location is surrounded by the city of Hackensack and does not border River Edge residential properties. Thus decreasing negative effects of having this business in River Edge and the fact that this business can help drive much-needed tax revenue for the town. This would be a positive change and I support the request. The next email is from Ken Schopenhour, seven eighty Melbrook Road. I have a question related to the proposed dispensary on Route four in River Edge. Is the borough able to create a zoning ordinance so only the particular property or area on Route four would be allowed to operate a dispensary? Or does it potentially open up the Kindercomac corridor or Main Street in River Edge to similar businesses? The next email is from Merrill DiMarsico of Park Avenue. My husband Bob and I are River Edge residents for over thirty years and we strongly object to opening a cannabis store in River Edge. There are acceptable businesses that could utilize that property to generate money for the town. Money is not a good compensation for this terrible proposal. Personally, I have smelled pot coming from open car windows while people are driving in town. We object to this proposal. Thank you for your consideration. Please say no to a cannabis store. The next email is from Robert DiMarsico of Park Avenue. I am writing to express my view on the upcoming decision regarding the opening of a cannabis store in River Edge. My wife and I have lived in River Edge for more than thirty-eight years. I realize the world is changing and cannabis use is now legal. However, I don't believe there's is any acceptable trade-off, e.g. an increase in ratables. For the potential negative impact on the community which may accompany the opening of such an establishment. The final email was received from Mary Kay McHugh, four ninety-four The Fenway. I am for the proposition to permit one cannabis retailer on the far side of Route four. After researching the effects of dispensaries on neighborhoods, I found that crime does not increase in neighborhoods with dispensaries. The fact that the location of the dispensary does not border any residential properties also allays my fears of increased neighborhood crime. Let's not forget that River Edge is home to Total Wine, which doubled its size in two thousand fourteen. Here's a description found in Boozy Burgs. Located less than twenty miles from New York City on Route four west, the new twenty-nine thousand square foot store. Features thirteen aisles stocked with more than eight thousand wine skews, three thousand distilled spirit skews and twenty-five hundred beer skews. The only complaints I heard in town when that happened was that there would be an increase in traffic. No one spoke of an increase in alcoholism or in crime. The increase in tax revenue from this dispensary would be most welcome and advantageous for our town.
Okay, um please correct me if I got this wrong. I have eight in favors, one no position and three against so far. I also, please correct me unless I have it wrong, all the questions that were asked in the written have already been answered by Mr. Legana. In regards to zoning, in regards to signage, in regards to traffic and also um. So I don't think further comment is needed, but when you come up, if you feel that further comment is needed. You may ask and we will uh we will answer uh to the best of our ability. Okay, so we've uh we've done the emails. Now what I proposed and the council has accepted is we'll have two in-person comments and one remote. When you come up, we ask you to be seated. We have angled it so that it can be seen on YouTube. The mic is present. You will have two minutes. Uh if you ask a question and we answer that question, it will not be taken out of your two minutes. Okay? Sounds good. But I have uh by show hands. Come on. Name and address?
Yep.
And once he finishes name and address, the two minutes would begin.
Raymond Stitz, two ten Mohawk Drive, River Edge.
Ready?
Okay, I I went over to Rochelle Park this uh this morning and I spoke with the administrator. Uh the Ascend facility gives them eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, the important part is, and I hate if I if I hurt anyone's feelings. The money goes to the town. Nothing goes to the Board of Ed. Okay, so it can't be, we get two hundred thousand, they get six hundred thousand. It's not, doesn't work that way because the way. The uh state gives you the money, it's all yours and doesn't belong to anyone else. I asked him about other effects. He said the police department is not really affected. They maybe get a call once a month. He said you probably get more than that with Total Wine. Around the holidays, yeah. And uh he said this, he also has another thing. It's Home Rule or something you work out with the facility. And they give you seventy, in his town, they give him seventy thousand dollars. In addition to all his other fundies uh funds that they can use for senior programs. For other programs that will entice the residents of River Edge. So that's another thing. You didn't bring it up, but I didn't know whether you knew about it or not. Uh. So that's another thing. You didn't bring it up, but I didn't know whether you knew about it or not. Uh let's see. And he said they've had it, I think, two years now, just about, and they have no problems with them. And i- it's not like, you know, a back office or the back door getting drugs or anything. You know, I've used the ones in Rochelle Park.
Fifteen seconds.
Okay. And I've had no problems. You, if you go, anyone have any doubts? Go into the Rochelle Park facility and it's amazing. It's amazing what they get done and when they get it done. Okay, thank you.
Right, I'm gonna ask you, and I'm gonna ask everyone from this point on, are you saying you're for?
Yes.
You're no position or you're against?
I'm for it.
Okay. We have another member. We had somebody on this side. Anyone on that side? Anyone in the rear? Come on up. Either seat.
I give my name in. Yeah, Anthony Arturi. One seventy-one Manning Ave. He had a lot more details, more things to say. I'm in favor of having the uh dispensary, especially with the. Overlay and all of that location. I think that we would, it's a great way to um bring this incremental revenue into town. There's already one in uh Rochelle Park. This is in a location where. People aren't, it's not like you're gonna trip over it and you're gonna have to get on the highway like you're going to Rochelle Park. So it's effectively already here. Cannabis uh industry and uh I think that uh. It it's um, it makes sense. It's also more of a bun location commercially otherwise right now. And we can bring in something that could uh not only bring the incremental revenue, but also kind of shore up the uh. Real estate properties there as well, I think. I think it's a net benefit all around. That's it.
Thank you, Anthony. And you did say you were for.
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh Councilwoman Coffin.
Yes, one second, hold on. I am. I'm just gonna scroll down to John Perino.
Yeah, why don't you uh reload them when we get to the second in person?
Okay. And do you know how to?
Go back one.
Yeah, I know. It's gotta lag.
No worries.
All right, here we go, one second. I apologize, this in-person thing is not.
As easy as it looks.
Yeah.
We understand, don't worry. So what we're doing is we're promoting the internet person to a panelist. That way they can turn on their camera. We're gonna ask for them to do the exact same thing we asked for you to do, to state your name, your address, and you will be given two minutes.
Here we go.
John, we're asking for you to turn on your camera and your mic. And uh once you have stated your name and address, you will have two minutes.
Sorry, my video is not seeming to work. Uh can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, uh three four four Valley Road. Um I.
Gonna state your full name for the record.
Uh John Perino. Speaking, I have a couple of questions. I guess the main question I would have would be. What can we do to limit the products being sold to only those that do not appeal to children? Um I, my main uh products I would bring out would be the marijuana edibles that are shaped like gummies. Uh and the flavored marijuana vapes. Is that a question that I can get answered?
We will answer it once you finish your two minutes.
Got it, got it. Uh so uh I have been to the Cookies uh marijuana store in Harrison. Uh that sells clothing that uh in my opinion appeals to children, uh kind of reminds me of cartoons. Um there's a big cookie uh that's outside of it, which. You would think would make it kind of a store that sells baked goods as opposed to marijuana. Um and so it to me kind of smells like tobacco two point O. Um we saw with the Juul uh flavored tobacco and then the bands that came in. Um kind of what happens when the state allows for a product without kind of going through all of the. Thinking around how these products can appeal to children. Uh we've seen different vapes uh that I've seen with my children's uh. Current transgressions, uh different products that are available um that uh have flavoring. Uh that are cannabis related that are sold at stores uh across the state. And so I'm just wondering. Not necessarily against the store or the uh revenue aspects of it, but it, I'm not seeing a ton about how we're protecting. You know, against these products being sold. Uh and while I understand the state might allow them, it doesn't seem like we wanna be.
Fifteen seconds, John.
Got it. Uh that we we don't wanna be guinea pigged on this and while I get that it's been allowed in other places, it doesn't necessarily need to be allowed here. If those products are not allowed to not be sold.
Okay, great. Uh uh Council, Councilwoman Coffin, if you would uh. Room uh turn him to uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And uh Mr. Legana.
So because cannabis is the entire kind of package deal, I'm not aware of any ability for local. Municipality to differentiate between leaf versus edible versus vapes to be sold at a particular location. I think if you're opening up to use, you're opening up to use. What you can control is the signage element on the outside that we talked about. Um and even the retail element on the inside. I think if they're starting to maybe. Have accessory uses such as selling T-shirts or goods that are not cannabis paraphernalia. Do you control that from a site plan perspective? Um so those would be the control mechanisms.
So to the uh to John's question, then he uh we would, we could either put that in the ordinance. Or we could uh being the fact that two elected are on the land use board and we, the council appoint the land use board. We could uh, we could make that an expectation of uh of uh zoning approval. And land use approval.
I I I I think that your greatest control mechanism for those, aside from what can be sold within the confines of it. All those other elements are going to be controlled through the site plan application like you indicated. Two members of this council will be on the planning board and will have some really good understanding of what the governing body is looking. To achieve when it comes to what the site should look like and how it should function.
All right, all right. Uh we are now back to a member of the president here today. Is there another? Come on up. Oh, okay.
Audrey Roman, two eighty-five Concord Drive. Um I'm all in for cannabis for medical purposes, but I'm not so sure for recreational. Only in that I don't think it's been proven that it's not a gateway drug and that that's a concern for me. Whether it's a ratable or not, that's a true concern. You also mentioned that it's on the other side of Route Four and that the um people in Hackensack will only be affected. Well, I don't think that's fair either. You know, I I'm I live in River Edge, but that's not the end of the other residents. Um you also said there'd be armed personnel on site. That's a concern for me that you have to have a facility, you're having a store and you're having somebody that's armed on site. You mentioned that it's, it will be um a particular license that they will have. But you just said anything can be included in that license because it can be an edible, it can be uh you know, you roll it up. I mean, so there's no, there's no, there's no limit on what's gonna be there, correct?
Oh, wait.
Okay, all right, and um. Another thing that was a red flag was that, well, you don't want it close to a school either. So um not being close to a school and the armed personnel were two red flags for me. Um that's it.
You have more time if you want.
Oh, and and you need a lot of capital to open up the store. So where's all that capital come from? Who's backing the person that's opening the store? That's a cause of concern for me as well.
Okay, well, I answered that. Um before you uh before you go, um I assume you're against, but I don't wanna.
I'm against, yeah.
Okay, okay, cool. All right, um so that's your two minutes.
Okay.
And we ask you to return to the audience and then. And then may- maybe if you're not answered, someone sitting with you can come back up and ask further.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Legana.
Okay, so for the type of license, I wanna be clear that the state has designated six types of licenses. When it comes to the class five retail, that is simply the retail distribution of cannabis in its retail form. The other one, other licenses are specific to growing cannabis, to the manufacturing of the edible products. And then there's also distribution centers as well as wholesale. But when I say retail, I mean the general term of retail. So. It when it comes to any other type of use, um this is specific to the consumer. Uh purchasing cannabis and consuming it off-site. And that's basically what it is allowing. It is not allowing for the growing of cannabis or for the wholesaling of cannabis. Or for the delivery of cannabis. So that's pretty much that. When it comes to the armed personnel, I made that comment. Because that would be my experience in what operators are choosing to do to secure their location. And that is done in concert with other security measures. Um it is not necessarily how they're going to operate. It should have been my experience that they've chosen to keep. Uh an armed security guard at the site. That might be something that the chief of police wants. It might be, they might be indifferent to it. It might be something the governing body is comfortable with. It might be something that they don't want. I that that's kind of a little bit of a gray area, but it's really up to the operator themselves on how they choose to secure their facility.
It's more of a concern for me.
Absolutely, and and that's valid. No, no, no. Was there someone? Yes, come on up. Full name and address.
Uh Stephanie Hartman, one forty-four Monroe Avenue. Um I wanna speak to what um the previous speaker spoke about, which is the social responsibility that we have. Um we're talking a lot about the fiscal benefits, but not the social responsibility. When you go into town, some towns are the most charming town, or some towns are, you know, voted this or voted that. Are we going to be the largest substance town? When you drive in, we've got Total Wine on one side. And we're gonna have a cannabis dealer on the other side. Um is that really what we wanna say externally? And is that what we wanna say internally to our community, to our young people? Um that that's, we we don't have a supermarket, but we've got plenty of places to buy substances. Is that what we wanna say? And when we talk about, both in the letter that was distributed and other things that are distributed, we talk about not being in our residential zone. But that doesn't mean we don't have a collective responsibility to our other people. Um because they're not that far away from our homes. Are they, um gosh forbid, having some sort of substance use crisis? And walking into our town to have that and then that, we have that responsibility to take care of that through our EMS, through our police. Um will it increase, you know, other um things? Um I just think that there's more to be thought of. Than the financial aspects. The financial aspects are are somewhat limited. They will, you know, die over time. Or or plateau over time. Um and especially, it would be one thing, I think, if we were in sort of a. We'll call it a retail desert, where we were saying, you know what, this is something that adults in our community. Um engage in in a responsible way and there's really nowhere for them to get that and benefit both. But there are numerous places uh within a ten to fifteen minute drive where people can get that. Both recreationally and also medically. So I'm a a strong no.
Okay, okay, cool.
Next is Lynn. If you could, I'm not sure if you're unmuted yet, but you're free to speak right now.
Lynn, if you can turn on your camera, that'd be great. If not, you need to say your full name and your address.
Um hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry, there's no option to turn on my camera, but um. My name is Lynn Goldberg and I'm at one eighteen Voorhees in River Edge. Excuse me, and I'm a strong no. Period. No. Do not want this. Don't think it's good for our town. I don't like what it represents. I don't like the issues that it can cause and I'm especially worried about young kids as well. Although they can't walk into the store and purchase it. I'm sure there are other ways they can get a hold of it through other people. So I'm a strong no.
Okay, you do have some more time if you want to elaborate. If not, we can move on to somebody else.
Um no, that's that's basically it. I really, I just really hope this does not go through. So that's it.
All right, thanks Lynn. Thanks for uh.
Thank you.
Okay, uh yeah, come on up. And then, or did we have?
I'm Carl Higgin, two ninety Midland Avenue. I'm strongly in favor of this. And for a number of reasons, but the one that I wanna talk about is. It was mentioned earlier that uh when the referendum came up in two thousand twenty-two. That the residents of River Edge voted two to one in favor of recreational marijuana. So I just wanna make the point that if that's the way our residents voted in two thousand twenty-two. That it would seem to me to be somewhat hypocritical for us to say. We're okay with recreational marijuana, but not in my backyard sort of thing. I think if we are supportive of 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 re- of uh recreational marijuana in the referendum. And we sell liquor in River Edge, I don't see why we can't sell recreational marijuana. That's my point.
You have more time if you wanna elaborate. If not, we can call in another person.
Call in another person.
And then we'll call you. Okay.
Hey, Kenny Lehman, one ninety Tenney Avenue. Um so I don't have an opinion.
Okay.
All right, I don't have an opinion because um I don't know enough about it. And so I came to tonight's meeting because I wanted to learn more and understand more. But I think that when, you know, when I hear about highly regulated industries. Industries aren't highly regulated unless there's a real perceived or actual risk, right? And so I wanna understand what those risks are. I wanna understand what other towns are participating in this. And are they having successes or are they having setbacks? Are there issues that come up with either increased crime or maybe there's no additional crime? Is there any introduction to underage sales? Or is there any involvement in other controlled substances that come in and out of the stores? I don't know, right? I don't know either way. And so I think that as information like this, if there's statistics that are around that kind of. You know, information or those kinds of questions come out, then either they'll put people's minds at ease or they might increase concerns. And so I think that what I would ask from you all is that continued. Um you know, uh due diligence and continued transparency and communication to the town to help us to maybe better understand. Are there additional risks that we need to consider? Are there additional successes like you had mentioned with, you know, offsetting, you know, tax base? With, you know, garbage collection or what have you and, you know, whether or not like those, you know, what's the risk reward? That we're looking at. So I just ask that um, you know, as you continue to pursue down this journey. Help, you know, people that are undecided to make a better or informed decision by putting more information out there. With related to those sta- those uh specific types of statistics.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mr. Legana.
Yes.
And Chief, if you wish to uh be a part of answering that particular question and you feel comfortable. Feel free to come forward at this time. If if you want to reserve for a later date, that's also good. I wanna let let Mr. Legana begin.
I I actually encourage all of the council persons to do as the resident did. Reach out to your local officials that have already adopted this. Let them tell you firsthand what have your, what are your experiences? You should have the, you know, uh. Uh courtesies, be granted the courtesies for them to at least tell you an honest answer of what those local municipalities are and there are. Sufficient municipalities now up and running that have been up and running for at least, you know, some of the two years. And they can give you a good idea of what you're gonna face and and some of the risks and rewards that that they are experiencing. And you can have a better understanding of what those towns are going through.
Okay. Chief, I I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you'd like to offer a comment, um. Okay. Chief, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to offer a comment, um, I ask you to just get close enough so that it gets picked up by the mic.
What, was there a particular question?
I think if I am being fair in, in summarizing, generally, what is the police concern, uh, risk and, um, or, or history that other chiefs might have shared at chief conferences or something like that?
Sure. First, I want to thank Mr. Lagana to give you a very good job. I think, um, from what I've looked at and spoken to, uh, like the mayor said, a few different towns with chiefs and, um, I visited the send, I met with the, uh, the management there, and I, very accurate as to your answers. What we, what we find, or what I find in looking at it is, and you, you really, like the mayor said, you should go visit the store at Rochelle Park. It's a, uh, it's a very well-run business, and it's, it is like an Apple Store. Recreational marijuana is more costly than the marijuana you buy in the street. So, because some people have this vision, and if I look around and look at our ages, I think if I say this movie, some people envision it's gonna be like Cheech and Chong. Right, it's, it's not. Um, they're not taking the weed out and selling it in the parking lot. Because, you know, the people that you're envisioning that are rolling their joints in parks and stuff, they're buying it on the street somewhere. These are, you know, and this would be our community, really. This is, uh, middle, upper middle-class people that are going in and purchasing the marijuana on a Friday and, and, you know, doing their thing with it on the weekend. Um, so, uh, and that, and that's what we find. Those are some of the things that I obviously would be concerned about. Is it gonna be like crazy in the parking lot? It's not. Um, Chief Pinto in Rochelle Park is, is a good friend of mine. He did a lot of homework on this. He's monitored this. Uh, he started off with having three paid police officers, uh, on the facility, and all law enforcement is paid by, uh, gets paid for by the establishment, so it's not the taxpayers paying, you know, the overtime. And it's overtime, it's not taking away from my patrol squad, right? Often that's, that's a question. The security of it, as I was just brought up, that vault is, is very, he's very, that's sincere. The vault, I was in the vault in, um, Rochelle Park, and it's reinforced walls. Um, and, and you know, we look at that, and somebody brought up the, the question of, um, you know, well, with regulations like this, it sounds like it's serious. Well, it is serious. If you equate it to like a CVS, right, when you go to CVS, the doors come down at night, they secure it and lock it up. There's just some dangerous stuff in there. But we all go to CVS, and we all need CVS, right? Um, marijuana, recreational, like they sell it, you're not seeing the weed, it's not like they come out in the parking lot and open it up. You go in the store, you're not seeing it anywhere, right? It's all packaged before it gets there. They have to check the vault at least once or twice a day. They do account on it. Um, there is a, a bank truck that comes and takes the cash, takes the money, one or two, you know, a couple times a day, depending on how busy they are. The traffic is, uh, you know, there's traffic engineer involved, definitely a concern. You know, we want to make sure the traffic is right. This particular location, I know the landowner, um, very well, and that is an absolute concern of his, that the traffic runs smoothly. Um, in speaking to him, I know he has, has put precautions or is prepared to put precautions in his contract with the, with the, they're called operators, the, the individuals that, that's, that, um, you know, open these stores. The operators that I'm aware of that are looking at this location are very well-established. They're, they, you know, they've, they've been in business in the tri-state area for a while. And they, they simply put, they come, somebody had asked about where they get their, they come with a lot of money. This isn't like, you know, I retired this weekend and, you know, two of us say, let's open up a weed store down for, you know, this, these people are established and they, and they know what they're doing. Um, and that's what we found, you know, and they get interviewed, you know, they get interviewed by the town, and the landowner, again, is somebody that, um, is responsible enough not to invite somebody. And that's just gonna, you know, um, deteriorate the place. When it comes to, you know, it leaving the store, uh, I would equate it again to the responsibility of like a total wine. You know, if I bring liquor home to my store and leave it lay around for my middle school kids, then I, it's probably a mistake on my part. Does that happen? Yes. Have you heard it happen before? Watch the news, a kid will get a gummy, alright? But they're not getting the gummy because they're hanging out in front of the store, right? Um, because somebody's eating it in their car and it falls out the window. You know, people go there, they're discreet. They want to go in, they want to do their thing, and they, and they take it and they go home. Um, it's my understanding that the sales, somewhere around sixty percent are, are pre-ordered. So they already ordered it. They come to get their stuff and they leave. It was mentioned, are there lines? There's lines at peak times, just like council said, that's, that's true. I watched, um, Rochelle Park for a period of time, and the manager there, um, you know, pointed out, he goes, watch this, what's gonna happen? And he had it down to a science. And he wasn't somebody that just started in business. They, they took him on from Nike. To give you an idea of what the caliber of, of business people you're dealing with here. Um, they, they, they're responsible and they do this. Um, and these are the things that I looked at, and I'm giving you the positive things because I'm trying to answer the questions that I, that I heard from. Uh, my concerns are the traffic. Certainly, we have to make sure the traffic is right. Uh, the security of the buildings, they, they, they actually do a good job with it. The, the security is, is something that they, they put effort and money and make sure the, the building is, is proper. The people coming out and the, like DWIs and things like that, it's, it's probably no more than any liquor store. Alright, I don't know, you might have somebody that goes there and they shouldn't be going there in the first place. The calls for service, when I talked to Chief Pinto, he equates it to any other residential, like seven-eleven or things like that, where he's getting basically the same amount of calls, but it's a different type of call, because you can't go into this store and shop with, not the weed. You know, you go in and your order is placed, you place your order, then you wait, and they call you up, they check your ID, and it, often it comes out a little slap. Person takes it, turns it out at the counter, gives it to you, and you leave. Right, so you're not like going up and down aisles, picking up, you know, different types of weed. You can't see it from the package. When it comes out, you can't look at it, can't, can't do that. So they, they've done a good job regulating it. And when I look at it, my guys look at it, and we, we speak to the towns that are there, it's, it's done properly. That's what I can tell you. You know, um, if we want to get into, I'm not really gonna get into, because I can leave it at, like, it's really individual or, or do your own, you know, yeah, the effects, it's, it's a, it's a drug that people can use. Am I big, am I happy about that? Law enforcement? You know, we didn't pass the law. I'll tell you that right now, law enforcement didn't pass the law. Alright, the state of New Jersey did not. And it's, it's here. Somebody said, it's here, I don't see it going anywhere. Um, some of the concerns are down the road, and I think council, when council said, it's going to dissipate a little bit. You know, if the state doesn't regulate it as far as numbers, there's gonna be more stores. So you're gonna, you know, this store that's gonna be booming for the next few years, probably three, four years from now, it's not gonna be booming as much. Right, and, and that's, we have to keep an eye on that. Does that mean they're gonna cut corners then? I don't know, keep an eye on that. But those are the things we actually look at. We look at the forecast and, and a lot of that has to do with the operators. You want to see what history they have. You know, and, and the smart ones know that. They know they're gonna come in, they're gonna clean up for a while, and then they become competitive. Like, what, what's the edge that we have? Do we have a better quality weed, simply put, than the guy in Rochelle Park? Or the guy in Fort Fatah, the guy in France? You know, what can we offer that's, that's up there? We looked at as many things as we could. Um, we're, we're prepared to do it if it happens. Um, and, and that, that negative side, if you would, is, is something that, right, we, we're, we're all about there and lead and things like that. So, you know, we're always, we're always gonna have that side of us that says, we don't want to see anybody use any drugs. You know, I don't like seeing anybody go to CVS, you know, so. So, that's, that's what we found. By, by answering questions, if you got questions, throw them at me, right?
Now, the purchaser, he has to be, or she has to be licensed from the state also. So you just don't go in there with your, um, automobile license and say, here's my ID. You have to go there with a ID that was given to you by the state for the cannabis.
That's specific to the medical?
Okay.
It's what's called the alternative treatment center, they sell only medical. Now, the rise on Route Four is only licensed to be medical because the borough of Paramus only permitted the sale of medical cannabis. This, as known as they said before, the class five retail is both, uh, medical, and they have to leave a slot open for their medical patients, but also to the general public, anybody over the age of twenty-one.
Thank you.
Now, you said as a police officer, and you did not vote for, please did not vote for this, the state voted for this.
I didn't say, I didn't say we didn't vote for it. I just said in a general sense, I can tell you law enforcement, we're, we're always anti-drugs, no matter, like I said.
Right, so you're anti-drug, so would you be anti-cannabis then?
I think law enforcement in general doesn't like to see anybody use drugs, but it's legal, right? So, so we have to accept that.
I understand that. Right, thank you.
In the back?
Yeah, I, I think you said that these people that are, are, that are creating, opening the store are well-established in this area. Has anybody been to one of their other locations to see how it's run? I know we keep hearing Rochelle Park, but it's not the same ownership, correct?
Yeah, it, it's, so, that's kind of getting ahead because we're so, we're in the infantile stage of this, that the, when, if this goes to that point, the application process will be opened up for applicants across the state. At that point. No, no, no. At, at that point, the applicant will then come to the governing body and give a presentation of who they are, give their experience, and, and really kind of try to sell themselves. And the governing body can hear as many applicants as they want until they're comfortable with a particular operator. No, no problem.
Do you, do you anticipate any staff increases or do you anticipate any retraining of your staff? The, this, this facility?
No, so there's, a- as council mentioned, there's a couple of different ways the security takes place. Um, you know, um, Rochelle Park and some facilities, they, they often start out with heavy law enforcement. So they, they, and, you know, they, they bring in this, you know, two or three officers. Maybe there's, you know, one in the parking lot even, and there's one or two inside. It, it depends, we sit down and we discuss it. And what they found is, you know, six months later, there's not necessarily a need for, for that amount of, um, manpower. Um, because things are operated okay. And in, you know, Rochelle Park, for example, if you go in, law enforcement officer sits on the second floor, has an eyeball on everything, watches cameras. They started off with, uh, three law enforcement officers in that facility, and it, it just, just wasn't needed. It's not, it's not attracting, you know, the ones that we're aware of in this area are not attracting like a riffraff crowd. Um, you, you're not gonna go there and buy weed if you're, if you're, you know, a riffraff type of person, because it's too expensive. You know, you're gonna, you're gonna go buy it on the street unfortunately, which unfortunately you still can do.
I'm gonna allow, uh, Mr. Lagana, and then I'll ask, if you want to control, should we give more people, because there certainly are people who would like to speak? But I did want to give Chief, uh, an opportunity to weigh in at this point.
Chief, I think you just made a great point. In your experience, did, uh, legalizing cannabis eradicate the black market?
No.
It still existed, right? What, maybe to a lesser degree, but the black market is still there. It's, it was there before this, it's there currently. This just gave it a cleaner, more controlled, uh, mechanism.
You can see from the way that it's set up, it's gonna cost more than if you buy it on the street.
And before we go to a follow-up question, does someone have a question for the chief who has not asked the question? If not, we'll go to a follow-up question. This will be the last question.
Chief, you see, uh, you said that there are, the cash is picked up, or there, there are people that come in and, and remove the, the, you see that as a potential problem?
I think that could be a problem anywhere, right? But, but, you know, when you look at the, the bank trucks that go to, they go to shop, right? They go to Total Wine, they go, you know, um, you know, we're not getting bank trucks, trucks held up, you know, in this area for, for anything. You know, um, they come with their own security, right? And, and they know how to do it. They don't show up every day at eleven-thirty, right? They're, they're just, you know, they go about their way of doing it, so.
You don't see that as a.
It's, and they also don't.
Overly concerned about.
I don't think so. I don't see it. Let's word that. We don't see, we don't see it out there. And it's not like they leave a ton of money in the store to go and break in and get it. Right, they get rid of their money, this, you know, this, this makes sense. That's what I've, that's what I've seen.
Alright, thank you, chief.
Great.
Um, I, are we, did we have two? And now we're into the internet? Alright, uh.
Natalia.
Natalia, you need to say your full name and your address.
Good evening, Natalia Blettle, four twenty-one Windsor Road. And I'm strongly against cannabis store at our beautiful River Edge Town. And my concern, actually, multiple people already raised, it's, uh, safety, it's all the red flags that we need extra security, or it's too far from school, it means. But my kids, they walk to habit, uh, there is Dunkin' Donuts there by the Total Wine. I don't want any people from that store to be coming to our neighborhood and my kids would not be feel safety. What I'm trying to say, that definitely it's gonna be attraction, not just to the, uh, uh, I, I don't know how to say, like, I think it's gonna be bring, bring more trouble. Right now, in River Edge, there are crimes going on, and we have all these, um, robberies. On my blog, there was house robbery, there was, um, carstle robberies. And I think that teenagers, they're gonna go out, they need money, they want to, uh, you know, open a few cars, go get some weed, have some fun, and then come to habit to, uh, to munch. Sorry, I have, I think that's.
Anything else?
No, I just thought that, that I, I really don't want this. No, sorry, it was somebody calling me on the phone, sorry, and I lost my, uh, idea. Um, yeah, I definitely against it. And, um, yes, and concern about neighborhood, that we are so nice, that even some person said, oh, it's not gonna have negative effect on us, because it's somewhere else. Yes.
Anything you wanted to discuss? Alright.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, come on up. And then, yes.
Uh, Joe Manzelli, seven eighty-nine Sixth Avenue, and I am for it, but, um, my question, Chief Walker actually answered one of them. So there is a landowner there now?
Yes.
Are they paying property taxes?
Yes.
So this, the, since the, the improvements they'd have to do would probably increase that, right? Because of the fact that, because I was thinking, jeez, if I came and got a license, I still gotta be, get a lease there, so.
I can't speak to that. That would be determined by professionals, when and if an improvement is made.
So the likelihood is, I make an improvement on a house, you guys raise my taxes, so same thing would probably happen there. So, um, what do you actually anticipate? Because you, it's two percent. I heard eight hundred thousand. Do you realize that's forty million dollars of revenue? That's going through that. So what, you guys have done a study, at least, what do you anticipate approximately?
That's a question that I'm gonna answer after you finish. You were asking factual questions, and that's why I answered those factual questions.
No problem.
That's anything else?
No, that was really it. I just, like, dollars and cents, what it's, what it's actually gonna bring.
Okay.
Good, so.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Cool. Uh, Mr. Lagana, if you could speak to, um, to the, it's a very difficult question because it's a speculation.
It, it really is. It's, it's much like any other business, it's location-driven, right? So if you put a, um, you know, McDonald's in a busy area, it's gonna do better than if it's in a remote area. So, location, 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 right? Um, what I can say is, what, what the governing body can establish, well, right off the bat, is going to be the annual license fee, which, uh, will, like I said, range from anywhere between seven thousand, I've seen as high as thirty thousand, but let's just say it's fifteen thousand. That's an annual license. The increase in the property tax revenue for any of the improvements, so if it's an older building, and that building is gonna be renovated as part of the site plan application, undoubtedly will have to be, you know, to come up with code and comply with state regulations for what the cannabis facility has to do, that will also be an increase in tax revenue, and then the two percent tax base. So, um, you, that's where, look at other towns, Rochelle Park, location, 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 right on Route seventeen, in that major corridor. Not a lot of other locations, although one that we've opened in, in Lodi was the Apothecary in Lodi, so there's actually one pretty close by. Um, and they're doing exceptionally well. Um, that I've heard is, I think twenty twenty-two, they did about four hundred ninety thousand dollars. I don't think the twenty twenty-three numbers have come out yet, but they're anticipating these first few years to really, um, have that ballooning effect, because there's so many stores still coming online. What I can say is, Route Four, eastbound, on the way to New York City. Route four, eastbound on the way to New York City, pretty good location. Um, highway, great access, uh Hackensack nearby, major city, uh urban population. So, from a location perspective, this was good for a variety of reasons when the subcommittee looked at it, and it was, you know, to, to keep it consolidated on the major roadway and have the ability to be successful, right? The, the idea is for this business to be successful and to generate the revenue income while also keeping the residents and having minimal impacts on the residents. So I, I can't, can't, can't give you numbers.
I, I know, I just, can I?
No, no, because I'm, I gotta maintain the same rules for everybody and it would be unfair to others.
Follow up with the chief.
Well, because the chief was uh an expert witness, so. But I will tell you this, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, a percentage point of tax, one tax point is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, correct? And um, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be three percentage points. Now, we try to keep the tax rate with all the insurance and the uh cyber insurance went up, what, sixteen percent? Uh, fourteen percent, uh, healthcare went up.
Went up twenty two last year.
Twenty two percent, that's.
Up eight this year.
It went up eight this year. Plus, we have, uh, we have sewage, we gotta get rid of the pee in the boot, and that, that's about a million dollars out of our budget, and garbage is another million and a half.
It, we're going out to bid again, so.
So we have these ever increasing uh issues. But we've been always trying with all of these inflationary issues, try to keep our tax rate at about two percent, and we were very, very brutal. So uh, the best I can say is that if this was something the town wanted, and if this was something the council passed, that it would probably have a positive impact on our overall tax rate. But I can't promise any of that, so I'm not going to promise any of that. I'm simply saying that these are probable outcomes, but as they say, whenever you see uh fidelity or any other uh investment thing, past uh, past performance is not guaranteed a future success. Yes.
Uh, my name's Joan Hesse, I live at two ninety Midland Avenue. I've lived in River Edge for thirty eight years. I've raised my kids here. They went to all of the River Edge schools. And um, I love River Edge, and I am totally for this process, this uh business. I think it's a benefit to the town, uh certainly financially. I think that the location is as perfect as could be um, for us and for Hackensack. Hackensack has dispensaries. Um, Paramus has dispensaries, so we would be more likely to complain if they were putting one near us. There are no schools nearby. And um, I mean, to me, the objections to it are sort of like licensing people to sell liquor when there was moonshine, and moonshine existed for a long time, probably still does in parts of the country. So to me, having a regulated business is the best way to try to manage it. My son said to me once, he wanted to go visit with some friends who are older than him, and I was giving him a hard time. And finally, I said, you know, I'm not comfortable with you being with these older boys because they may be doing things I don't want you exposed to. And he looked at me and he said, ma, he said, if I wanted any of that stuff, I could get it so easily. I don't have to be with these older boys to get it. So I think the thing is, is you teach your children to be responsible, the signage has to be kept to be not cookies. And I think that many people drive by all these dispensaries and you don't know what they are. In fact, I asked my husband yesterday.
Time.
Yeah.
But I thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
Next up is Hernan Green. Hernan?
No, but you haven't.
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry, did you not respond? I, I don't, yeah, we're good.
We're good. Hernans, please say your full uh name and address, and you will have two minutes.
Hernan Green, one ninety nine Bogart Road, River Edge. Uh, it, it seems to be a thing to announce uh, uh, the length of time duration, so I've been a River Edge resident for fifty four years, uh but my family was here before me. Um, I wanna be recorded as being in favor of uh, of uh this passing. Uh, just to a few points that have been mentioned, I think most of them are addressed. Armed security to the, to the individual who is worried about armed security. Uh, they have armed security at the mall. Um, so it's right over here, at Riverside Square. Uh, they have armed security at all the malls, I think. So, you know, you can't go to Whole Foods without um, knowing that you're being protected by somebody with a firearm. Uh, in fact, I, I, I believe the chief addressed this, but, but didn't really tout the benefits of it. Rochelle Park, when they passed the, I believe when, it was when they passed the ordinance, they, they made it a thing that their officers could work overtime and, and earn overtime by providing security, so it was a benefit to them as well. Uh, and obviously that was optional. Um, anyone leaving this facility, uh, which we, you know, we've already touched on that, this is not a thing that's very likely or that occurs very often, but let's face it, anyone leaving this facility doing something that they shouldn't be doing is gonna be greeted by the Hackensack or the T-Nec Police, and for any of you who know them, they, you know, they don't take these things lightly, and I don't think that's gonna be a problem. Um, your young kids who are accessing it as the uh, um, young, our resident who just spoke, uh, they're not buying it at a dispensary. That's, that's not where they're going to get this. So yeah, I, I truly much of an increase, thank you. And um, uh, uh, just a note on moonshine, yes, it is still available, and you can buy it at Total Wine and more. So, thank you so much for listening.
Okay, Hernan, thank you very, very much. We're, yes. I am going to put a nine P M um close for the meeting at this point. Uh, is there objection from council?
Just wondering if we need to get more people on to.
What we're doing is two and one, so does council wish to change that to two, uh, one and one?
Yeah, maybe nine thirty, I, I would say.
Uh, could I motion in second to uh bring the meeting to an end at nine thirty?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so we have a hard closing time. Name and address.
Hi, Claudia O'Neil, nine eleven Bogart Road. Um, just two things I want to bring out. One, I'm totally against this. Um, I've been at the chair for the municipal alliance of our town uh for the past eight years.
I want to stop you there, simply because the public won't know what that means.
Oh, uh, Municipal Alliance Against Drugs and Alcohol.
Okay.
Um, so I guess one of my questions would be with the money, if, if this does pass, and I, I'm hoping it doesn't, but if this council just decides to do it, would you be willing to take some of your hard earned money that you're receiving and put it towards education? And match what we get from Jakarta every year, or double we, we get from Jakarta every year? For educating our.
I'm not gonna answer that.
Okay.
Yes, we won't, but uh, how much is Jakarta?
Jakarta gives us about five thousand dollars a year.
Okay, and uh, after you finish, if the council wishes to weigh in on that, they could.
Okay, okay. And then second, um, I'm a residential nurse for um group homes within Bergen County. Um, I deal with people with mental illness. Can't tell you how many times I have to drive to Rochelle Park to pick up my people that are roaming around the streets of Rochelle Park because they're too high, because they've already gone to the um dispensary there. So, that is a great concern. I choose to work with these people. I don't want these people in my neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay? Just want to put it out there. That's about it. So if you could get back to me with those numbers, that would be great. We'd love to have more money so we can better educate our youth on not to do this. Okay?
All right, good. All right, um, correct me if I make any errors, um, but I believe the council absolutely could um, could oh, first of all, uh, the full portion of the tax revenue does, does go so, solely to the municipality and not to the school system.
Correct.
Okay. And I don't, I, I can't imagine the council would say no to doubling or tripling the amount of money that we put towards that in the budget. I personally would be for it.
Thank you.
But I, I'm not gonna speak to the council, and that would be a decision we would do uh when we came to budget time. Smart. Um, all right, uh, we, we, we had, we only voted to extend time, we didn't vote to uh do, change the two to one. So we're still, we did do two, right? In persons?
One.
Oh, Claudia was one?
Yeah, Hernan and.
Oh, Hernan and Claudia. Someone else from, who is present here would like to speak who has not spoken? Come on up. And then what will happen is if we don't have a hand up, we will go, uh, we will go virtual, but with each virtual, yeah, I will get call upon those present if they wish to step in, and that would be, uh, I think a good use of our time. Full name and address.
Albert Rollman, uh, two eighty five Concord Drive, River Edge.
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess I'll start out, I'm not, I'm not really in favor of this. I, I came here with a very open mind. Uh, probably my, my vision was veiled a little bit by the cost, the tax benefit that we were gonna get. Then I started thinking about some of it, and some of the, the descriptions of how it was, how the business worked, got me a little bit concerned. I'm not sure how the uh, the two percent is derived. I don't know if it's off the gross revenue or it's off the net revenue. Can they remove their expenses from it? Is it just profits? Uh, I got kind of concerned about that. I got concerned about competition, because you talked about so many other places, other places that are so close. So, why would this business thrive when there was so many other places around? I got concerned over the fact that it didn't seem like the product was regulated from a wholesale standpoint. So that the business could lowball somebody else or charge more for whatever reason they wanted to, and it didn't seem like a, a controlled business. It, it seemed like a very roosly uh derived business. I, I got a little concerned about that. Um, so my, can, my benefit, the benefits of the money went down. I don't like the idea of having a, a drug being distributed at this close to where I live. I don't know who I'm gonna get in here. The concern of Route four with people coming off the highway, getting in there is a concern to me. I think the best thing about this is the location of it. But that's the only real benefit that I see.
Okay.
Okay?
So.
Thank you.
Uh, are you no position or against?
I'm against it.
Against, okay. All right, thank you.
I can be changed. I can answer.
Yes, I was gonna go to you.
Two percent of the gross of all cannabis.
No, no, no. We're not answering to individual persons, we're answering to the group.
Fair enough.
So that we maintain a consistency of response. So uh, uh, Councilman Lagana.
My count.
Why did I say that? Counselor.
Yes, I, I just answered that one point. It, I make it clear, two percent, two percent of the gross sales revenue on all sale receipts. So again, it is traceable, in that every sale receipt that, that gets printed out for each sale, the two percent tax gets transferred to the bar.
All right, and he also asked a question about wholesale. I assume wholesale is as tightly regulated as retail?
Yes.
Okay. And um, okay, so, um, okay. Um, so we now go to Colleen. Colleen, if you can state your, if you can turn on your camera, great. If you can't, you can't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. Can you see me? Uh, hear me?
No, we can hear you. Uh, full name and address.
Okay, uh, Colleen Hamel Schwabek. I live at one forty Wayne Avenue. And uh, I, this is a hard no for me. Um, I've been here for all my fifty years, my family's been here for eighty years, and they've put a lot of hard work into this town. Um, to me, this brings down the town. This is not River Edge, and I don't like being compared to any other town. We're not a Rochelle Park, we're not a Lodi, we're not a Bergenfield. We have always been this fantastic town. And the comment that I would like to make is, is, and I commend you guys for um putting out, you've, you've done your homework, uh, the town council, and I commend you for that. Um, you know, giving us all this information and so that we can, you know, uh, make up our minds. Um, I commend you for that. However, um, I really wish you put this hard, this hard work into uh, businesses that we can all use in this uh town. Supermarket, uh, you know, I, growing up here, we had two supermarkets, we had two bakeries, we had two hardware stores, we had so many, so much revenue, and I wish you worked as hard as you're working now for this. I wish you worked that hard to get the really good businesses that every single person in River Edge could use. That's it, thank you.
Welcome, Colleen. Um, I'm just going to um mute her.
Yeah.
Just going to uh say two things. Uh, I, I, is one, we do work hard to get other businesses. We work very hard on the land use board, um, but we do not have control over what businesses want to come to River Edge. When they do, we work very hard to try to keep them. Um, and we did not uh ask cannabis business to come and say, hey, we want to be in River Edge. So I just want, I want to say that, and because that sometimes gets confused, even during election years, I'm elect me and I'm going to bring all these businesses to River Edge. It, it doesn't work that way. We don't um have the authority to uh, keep out businesses. If it's a permitted use, it's a permitted use, and we don't have the authority to bring in businesses. Um, so, so in that, that sometimes you get a little confused about. Um, unless you're going to create a uh, a development area, and then what you're doing then is you're, you're giving them a break on taxes. And then you can attract companies because they won't have to pay as much. But I, that just sometimes is a misnomer that, that occurs. And to be honest with you, until I became elected, I didn't fully understand it either. So, just want to make sure that we clarify that. Um, uh, Mr. Lagana, did, did I say anything factually incorrect or anything that I need to?
No, I think you're accurate on that. Um, one thing I would say is uh, supermarkets are also tricky, um, high volume, people coming from other towns. It's, it does probably the most difficult, as much as we all want supermarkets, but it's some of the most difficult applications to deal with, um, because, you know, from a land use perspective, because they're so massive and the traffic volume is, is so difficult to control. Um, that's all.
Yeah, no, and, and to be honest with you, it, it would be great if we did have a supermarket, uh, but we don't have any supermarkets looking to come. And we're, we would be grateful for that. Um, but, having said that, uh, anyone here who would like, come on up?
Hello, good evening. Uh, Caleb Herbst, one sixty seven Tenny Avenue, River Edge, New Jersey. I guess, obviously, the River Edge Park. Um, thank you for holding us tonight. Uh, I just wanted to uh put my position on the record in favor of this. Um, you know, I think the chief actually mentioned, you know, the, the age range of the people in this room. Um, you know, I can, I graduated from Riverdale High School class of twenty sixteen, so that is eight years ago now, which is kind of scary, but uh, I can tell you, there's no dispensary in River Edge now, and there are drugs in the school population now. Um, I can tell you that there were back when I went, um, and this might sound scary to a lot of folks, that's just the reality of the situation. Um, you know, I think that it goes back to what one of the other residents was commenting on tonight about um education, about responsibility, about making sure that we are doing what we can as a community to um educate our children about, you know, the, the risks uh associated with this. Um, and I don't think that, again, as it's been brought up a, a, a ton, uh, that this is the type of product that is going to wind up in the schools. That's just not, it's expensive and it's not what's going to um, it's, it's just, uh, the reality of it is that it's not going to wind up in the schools. So, um, with that, I'll, I'll leave it for the rest of my time.
Okay. Thank you. Um, before I, that was one. Is there another person in the audience? No duplicates.
Oh.
Actually, no, I began with that. I began, there would be no duplicates.
Hello, I'm Janet Boyd, I'm at one sixty seven Tenny. Um, I just want to say I'm for the dispensary. In nineteen eighty-two, we had a business come before the council, uh, looking to open, it's not a dispensary, a business, uh, looking to open, and they had a scandalous name that was denied by the council. And they continue to operate in business today as Wob Lingeray. Many of you know Wob Lingeray. They went in as Wizard of Bras. Scandalous. So back then in nineteen eighty-two, we were just like, no, we can't have bras on the title. I think we have to realize that the state of New Jersey voted to legalize marijuana and the residents of River Edge also uh, were the majority voted in favor. So I think it is a good location. I think the revenue will be good. And if the business ultimately doesn't make money, if we vote with our wallets, it will fail. So I think for now, we should, we should give it a go while the going's good, because there is a window that will close in terms of booming business. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Lauren, if you can turn on your camera, great. If not, that's okay. Please state your, uh, turn on your mic, state your full name and your address.
Lauren?
Quick, ask to unmute, see what happens. All right, let's go to somebody else.
Okay, one second. Anna? Do you like to speak?
Anna, this is Mayor Papaleo. Can you hear me? Anna, you need to unmute yourself for a moment, she might be. Whenever you ask anybody, unmute themselves, including myself, you always get nervous. Where's the button?
Anna or Lauren?
All right, what we're doing is we'll come back here while we see if we can't get Anna or Lana, uh, Anna or Lauren. Anyone from, uh, from present here who has not spoken? All right, anyone, uh, will give, is there anyone else?
There aren't, there aren't any other people with their hands up.
All right.
There was one question in the chat box.
Let's do that and then we'll go to the gentleman in the audience.
One second.
Uh, here we go.
Here we go. What oversight, if any, is proposed regarding all modes of advertising of the establishment?
Uh, Mr. Laguna.
Well, in terms of physical signage, we've already spoken about that, how they can regulate that. In terms of advertisement, I mean, it's kind of brought out on the radio, newspapers, I don't know if there's any prohibition on that, but the, what the borough would focus on is the signage and what the building looks like from the exterior. So we already spoken about that. I think you have really two good examples and what, and rise and ascend of what that sign would look like, what that facade would look like. And of course, any other controls that the governing body would like to be implemented. So, um, that, that's really where the control comes.
All right. Uh, and the Q and A can change his vote.
Right, uh, well, yeah.
We'll come back to that. No, it's.
I mean, he, he said yes, and he mailed in a question or wrote in a question. So he wanted to make sure he's counted as a yes, not a neutral.
I think I counted him as a neutral? I counted him. All right, so we'll move Ken from no position to in favor. Okay. Anna, are we there? Well, we'll, we'll see. Uh, yes, sir.
Counsel.
Hello.
Uh, my name's Ronald Dussein. I'm from actually a neighboring town, Teaneck.
So, we can permit this, right?
I believe so. It was a public portion.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to make the comment. I mean, obviously, uh, you guys are going through a very thorough process and it makes sense to uh, choose a potential applicant that makes the most sense for the town in terms of fit and in terms of, you know, the value proposition that they have to the town. Obviously, there, obviously, there is a baseline two percent, uh, limited, legally limited, uh, tax revenue that you can receive on product. But what does the community impact plan look like? And what do those factors look like in terms of drug education as, uh, the individual from the alliance spoke of? Uh, so I think those are all very important aspects of the application process and, you know, one thing that we see in New Jersey especially is that you know, there's zoning that's done and then, you know, the, let's say that the LOI or the lease is given to one applicant and then they're the ones who are allowed to, uh, essentially, uh, make their case, but because other applicants have been unable to obtain a lease, they're not able to participate and compete with, uh, in in their meetings with the township. So it's almost like the landlord in some sense is having, is choosing who the winner is. And so I think it's important for the town to consider that ultimately you choose, uh, what do you do the application process? Perhaps you, you know, validate financials and you validate community impact, impact plan. Uh, but you don't necessarily require at the immediate, uh, at the start that they have a, uh, uh, that they have, uh, control of the site. Uh, because if you control it, if if you require that they have control of the site before the application process, then it's, you're, you're gonna have a limited number of applicants essentially. Uh, so that's just, uh, some commentary on that. Um, yeah, that's just about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, what about Anna?
They both, oh, one second. One second.
This is a bit of a lag time. Anna, are you there?
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your full name and your address and you'll be given two minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amash Concepts. I live on forty-two Jordan Drive. Um, sorry about my difficulties earlier. So I just wanted to say I'm a hundred percent against. I have a six-year-old and I definitely don't want her finding any of those quote-unquote gummies on the playground. Um, I'm also a little bit concerned of a dem- demo, certain demographic, this my, this type of business might attract to our town. I I read this article about Princeton. I know Princeton was, was apparently was one of the first town that, um, embraced uh, this type of store and now two years later, all, all the, everyone who was for it, they are all against. They would, if they could, they would reverse the time, mostly because of the smell, the terrible smell that's everywhere, everyone's smoking. I know you said like, it's not a dispensary, so we shouldn't be concerned about the smell, but believe me, I I'm pretty sure it will. Like, when I go to New York City, I can't even walk anymore, cause it's, the smell is just everywhere and it's terrible. So when I wanna go out for a walk, I I wanna enjoy fresh air. I don't wanna smell this. So I do have a question. Is smoking marijuana generally allowed everywhere on playgrounds, near playgrounds? Is there any restrictions close to school?
So when you finish your questions and comments, we will then close the mic and we will have our attorney, uh, answer them.
Okay.
So do you have any other questions?
This is all I wanted to say. I'm, I'm against, I, like I said, I have a small, um, child. I will obviously have that conversation and then, um, make sure that as she grows, she understands, but, but at this age and then everyone who has younger kids uh, is just hard to control if they pick up a gummy from somewhere, you know. Um, you, you just can't be there all the time for them. And I urge the people of River Edge to reconsider, to do their due diligence and read about other towns who have embraced this and now are all against this. This is all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We would close the mic and Mr. Laguna.
So in two thousand and four, the state passed the Smoke Free Air Act, uh, Smoke Free Clean Air Act. And it prohibits smoking pretty much everywhere.
Except Atlantic City.
Except Atlantic City and the casinos, which is under attack now. Um, so you can smoke, you cannot smoke in, uh, public places, restaurants, bars, parks, uh, school facilities. So you're really limited on where you can go now. Um, it, it's an enforcement thing that, uh, you know, it's true that the Borough Wardens also had a smoke-free areas as well. Um, so there's very limited areas in which you can go to smoke, uh, outside. Um, so it's really relegated to your home use and everything else is currently prohibited, including tobacco and tobacco products, cigars and cigarettes, um, that, uh, is an enforcement measure. So it's already on the books.
Okay. Councilwoman Kaufman, uh, I believe there are some, um, things that we were hearing from residents in the chat. Um, I would normally like the clerk to read that into the record.
Sorry.
So if you could bring that up. Madam Clerk, if you could read into the record some of the comments that have, uh, appeared in the chat, excuse me.
One second, I'm just gonna.
Their name and, uh, we don't have their address. Anonymous will of course not be read into the record. And if we have an initial without a name, we're not going to read that into the record either. We do need a, I don't know if they're make me up a name, but we're, we're gonna assume that we have a name that they are who they are. Start with Ken.
Ken Schuffenauer, while you're taking a straw poll, I would like to say I'm in favor of a dispensary. I submitted a question online and was counted as being neutral at the time.
Okay, we, uh, if we scroll down some more?
Yeah.
It's a little slow on it. Okay?
Herb Fleischman, what oversight, if any, is proposed regarding all modes of advertising of the establishment?
We answered that, I believe. Keep going.
Amanda Delucia, two sixty-five Greenway Terrace, I am in favor of this dispensary.
Now, I believe I counted Ken, but I did not count Anne, uh, Amanda. So I'm gonna add Amanda to the four. Go ahead.
Eileen Delucia, two sixty-five Greenway Terrace, I am here to support a cannabis company coming to report. If this is a way for the town to get more taxable revenue, I fully support this.
All right. Back to those present. Is there someone who has not spoken who would like to speak? Is there anyone who has their hand up in the chat? If not, I'm going to allow someone who would like to speak again, a one-minute opportunity.
One second. Carmen Philbin.
All right, we're gonna go to Carmen then.
So Carmen, if you would like to speak, if you could just say your name and address.
Yes, thank you. Um, I have to apologize. I have a terrible cold, so I'm so sorry for my voice. Um, I'm in Philbin, two nineteenth Orchester Road. Um, I just wanna note that I am against, uh, the, the cannabis store. Um, I, and I just wanna reiterate, um, a couple of the comments this evening. I do not believe that any tax benefit would merit having the store in town. Um, location, a thousand percent ideal location. I mean, no one's gonna argue that. You're right on Route four. But to the resident that in person spoke about her social responsibility as a town, you have total wine on one side and now you're gonna have this on the opposite side. We're fifteen-minute straight shoot down from New York City. We're east or west, you got a two-for-one deal coming on Route four and so easy to make that U-turn to do stop at both stores. Um, I also don't think the comments that it's on the Hackensack side, that's not a fair comment to make to the residents um, over there. So I didn't appreciate that, um, you know, in the emails and the communications that came out. And, um, I think it was Colleen, uh, virtually, she spoke about, um, other establishments. I would love, love, love to see other establishments come into town, um, and not the cannabis store. Thank you.
All right then. Anyone, uh, anyone else on the cyber side? Anyone who has not yet spoken on the in-person side? All right, let's see if we can't get Suzanne. Suzanne, are you there?
Here we go. Suzanne? If you could unmute yourself? Suzanne?
All right, we're waiting Suzanne. If you'd like to come up for one more minute? One more minute? Absolutely. So we're gonna give a second chance for one minute because, uh, we have the time. One minute, Mr. Shading.
Stephanie Hartman again, I'm actually sort of.
Gotta give your full address again. Start until you die.
One forty-four Monroe. Sort of coming on behalf of, um, of, of, of Mr. Manzelli or the concept of it's, you can't actually say what the revenue is.
No.
So when you're talking about the offset of costs or what could be offset, um, it could run the gamut from two hundred thousand dollars to something more and we won't know until it's already done. Um, and so.
That's factually correct.
Right. Um, and, um, you know, uh, um, I've seen a lot more uproar over the, the shot, the reconfiguration than over what could be, uh, traffic and other consequences from this. So, um, when we're looking at it, what's the tax benefit, we may feel no real tax benefit. Um, we don't know that. It could be a dollar.
You will definitely feel a tax benefit.
It could be, it could be, it could be a dollar in which you don't feel that tax benefit. Um, so that's just really from per household. So that's just really something to put out there. You need the number in order to really sell the people the number.
Yeah, um, so I'm like, yes, sit down. So, uh, it is absolutely true that, uh, the individual tax benefit, uh, may or may not be, uh, significant because, uh, until it went through and, and, uh, the business opened, we would not know that. The only thing that you can say, uh, is that the, the filing fee, is filing fee, is it called?
Licensing.
Licensing fee of seven to fifteen to thirty thousand would certainly, uh, be a benefit, um, to the overall budget, but how it impacts individuals, we don't know. So that is absolutely accurate. Uh, but there would be at least a filing fee benefit that may not be good enough for the residents of River Edge. It may be good enough for the resident of River Edge. I'm not trying to say for or against, I'm just clarifying, uh, that you are correct there. Uh, anyone else from the cyber side?
There's just another comment.
Uh, if we could read, uh, well, we don't have a last name.
Yes, we do.
Oh, go ahead.
Joe Godier, one fifty-one Concord Drive. I'm in favor of the dispensary in the proposed location. I would like to thank the mayor and council for taking the community's opinions into account, regardless of what you decide.
All right. Any member of, yeah, come on up. Oh, you got one minute.
Yeah, I know. I'll get past.
Yeah, we don't take the time out of your walking or saying your name or address.
Um, Audrey Roman, two eighty-five Concord Drive. Uh, I'm just curious, prior to this, if you didn't, if you investigated whether or not marijuana is a gateway drug to other drugs. And if you haven't, could you please investigate that and find out, you know, find out the information on that? I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Hey, thank you.
All right. Mr. Laguna.
I, I did not do any research.
But the state has.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's plenty of literature regarding cannabis and substance abuse generally.
And that, that information, if I was not, if I'm not mistaken, was made available to the public before the vote. It was a constitutional amendment or was it just a, how did the vote, what kind of a vote was? It was a constitutional amendment was considered and I, uh, I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that that information is available and was available. So it, it is available to you if you wish to do an entry and search. Anyone else? One minute.
One minute. Ray Stitz, two ten Mohawk Drive. To answer the question or to give another answer, if we get two dollars gross from this, that means the, the business is out of business.
Yeah.
Right? Because that means they only sold one. Okay? And then you're gonna have another empty storefront, like the nine others in this town. So here, you have an opportunity. Is it the best opportunity? No, another nail shop would be much better. But anyway, the relation, the realization of the money coming in is based on the sales. And you have to hope that the sales are enough to hit the four hundred thousand dollar mark. Or the best thing is eight hundred thousand dollars, but we have to do something and this is an opportunity. Because if someone puts another store in Paramus, fifty feet away from this, we got it. Paramus is not gonna come to us for permission, but we have a store.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. Uh, we have an iPad individual. We need a name.
Suzanne Krokowski, ninety-two Leffy Street.
Good. Suzanne hasn't spoke yet, right?
No.
Go ahead, Suzanne. You have two minutes.
I haven't spoke because I keep. I haven't spoke because I keep, like, disconnecting myself, because I have so many privacies on my iPad. Hi, I have lived here twenty-two years, I'm on Lakeview, I'm on Lakeview Street, which is very close to the site that we're discussing. I am, A, all for it, because I think we totally need to generate more businesses in our town. And with regulations that we have for alcohol, as we've discussed before, marijuana dispensaries are now legal, why wouldn't we want to generate some more revenue for our beautiful, small, lovely town? Yes, it doesn't go directly to the schools, but it goes directly to the town itself. And with that, I think it, like, it's just a no-brainer, almost. I understand the concerns for our children being exposed to marijuana or gummies, per se, but in all honesty, it's really up to the parents to control that in their own households. Because there, if they're getting gummies, most likely, or marijuana, or alcohol, for that matter, it's from their household. So we need to teach the children, and the woman who came on, oh, I don't know, forty-five minutes ago, who is with the programs, I agree with her a hundred percent that we need more education towards teaching our children about consequences, oh, I'm sorry, okay, so, hello, ninety-two Lakeview Street, and I am for it.
Alright, thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone online?
There is not.
We will give it thirty seconds, and then I'll ask for a motion to close to the public. Let me ask again, is there anyone present who would like to speak? Is there anyone online who would like to speak? Hearing none, I call for a motion to close to the public.
So.
Should we move then, seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, by my count, uh, we have essentially, um, a three-to-two ratio, a little bit more than a three-to-two ratio, which is essentially what was the constitutional amendment in River Edge. The council is not making a decision tonight. So what will happen is, um, the council will consider this at the next open meeting. At this time, if the council wants to move ahead with an ordinance, that would then, uh, be brought before the public. If the council voted for that, then it would go to the land use board. And then if the land use board found it in keeping with our master plan, it would come back to the council. It would then have an open public hearing and a vote to approve or to disprove it. If that occurred, then, um, then the process that Mr. Lagana said would, uh, would continue to move forward. We would, of course, uh, there would be public hearings, for those who would be interested in coming to River Edge, there is no, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, there's absolutely no obligation, if it was, if the council decided to put it forward, if it went through the two hearings, if the land use board approved it, and we allowed for the license, and, um, businesses came forward and we didn't like them, to my understanding, we would not be obligated to accept any of them. We could just simply say to five businesses, thank you very much, but we don't want to have any of you five present in River Edge. Even if they did, it would then go to the state for, uh, for a license, it would, um, it would be, it would go through further process, so as promised, no decisions being made tonight, none. And we will consider it at the next council meeting, to see if we want to, uh, write in, uh, a ordinance uh, with the safeguards that Mr. Lagana suggested, and then it would be on for a public hearing at the following meeting, if it was considered, and if it was ready as an ordinance, and then it would go to the land use board for a public hearing, and then it would come back to the council for a public hearing. And then there would be future public hearings for anyone who wished to entertain it.
Just one more comment, Brandon.
Uh, well, no.
No?
We closed the public.
Okay.
So, uh, that's why I waited the thirty seconds.
Okay.
And, uh, checked again, so, was that comment in before I closed to the public? In your opinion, Counselor?
I mean, I'm not looking at my watch, so I'm not.
Alright, then, then I don't think, what would you say, Mr. Lagana, at this point?
She had an opportunity to speak, I mean, I was.
It's just someone who wanted to vote yes. He's the comment, so, on the reasoning.
Yeah, I, I, we have, we have closed to the public, um, so I, I'm, I'm going to, as chair, would you say within, in my prerogative to move forward?
I believe you did close to the public, so I think yes, Mr..
Alright, is there any comments from any member of council? Remind you that no comment should show whether you're voting for or against this, we're going to leave that for the next council meeting. Is there any comments from the council?
I have one.
Sure.
I just want to thank the public for coming out and expressing their views, whatever it was, thank you.
I, I too, I want to, um, thank Mr. Baring from Arizona Board, I want to thank the chief, I want to thank Mr. Lagana, I want to thank Mr. Shedainian. I don't know Bill's last name. I'd like to thank Mr. Rupp, as well as, uh, I'd like to thank the council for, as always, uh, doing things right, professionally, judiciously, and, uh, we'll see where we go from here. And I'd like, uh, to thank the public who, uh, took the time out at home, as well as the public who is present among us tonight, I really, really appreciate it, I think this is the way good government works. Alright, could I have a motion to close, to adjourn the meeting?
To move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, we are closed.